For September 12th, 2019, at 7:30 at the Lakewood Senior Center. And first on the agenda is to meet with Mr. Patello, Michael Patello. For the site plan review for 310 Kenneth Welch Drive.
As you know, I was here about a month and a half ago reviewing the site plan. And again, I'm here representing Monroe Associates, a little retail marijuana establishment. So I presented to you a month and a half ago or so. We reviewed the site plan and there were some additions to the site plan that the planning board had not previously approved. So the direction I had taken from that meeting was to get the site plan amended to take out everything that has not been approved and that should be the site plan that's in front of you. So, and also you probably have a packet for the zoning, the ZPA meeting for next week. So I'm not sure if you have any questions related to that or.
Say that again?
So you should probably, you also have a packet in front of you.
Yes.
Which is, you know, for the special permit application, the whole application actually, as opposed, exactly, as opposed to just the site plan.
Mr. Chair, I see correspondence from the fire department, the board of health, who both approve or have no problem with the site plan as presented as what the fire department's comments were and the board of health acknowledged they approved this epic plan design. There are two letters from the conservation commission, one before their latest meeting and then one after their latest meeting. Basically, the one before their most recent meeting was to make mention that they would have this hearing on their September 10th meeting, which has happened. And chairman put a letter in, basically making note wetlands concerns with snow removal. I guess my question is, everything that's on the plan currently that shows pavement, is that existing pavement?
Yes.
Yeah, and again, the only thing that I'm basically speaking to is the circular parking on the front.
Yeah.
And that does have first coat only on there, so the base coat.
Yep.
The other thing, there's a walkway drawn here that is not in there completely yet. So that walkway going from one entrance to the other.
Like the extension, that's how it extends.
Exactly, yeah. It goes to the first door or not to the exit.
My question to you is, are you a LSC?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So he's not really concerned with, with snow removal? That would be his landlord?
Correct.
Landlord's doing snow removal?
He is.
And that's what the conservation commission is concerned with?
Yeah, and further than that, around here, I don't think there are any identified wetlands, so I think those are more on the back.
No, agreed, but it sort of boils to the same thing that we're approving the plan in its entirety.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, you know, just, I have to ask the question because it's been put to us, so.
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, it's, it's one of those things, if the pavement exists on your plan as it sits in the building right here, we're, we're going to be pretty good with that. But if this is a plan that shows hopeful pavement that doesn't exist now and it pushes closer to the wetlands, even though you're only focused on the Monroe Brothers dispensary and their circular parking in the front, it is on the plan that we vote.
Yep, which is a part of the problem we had last time, right? There was some stuff on there that wasn't.
So I mean, as long as we can verify that the pavement that shows in the plan is existing and no changes, then it's no problem.
And what they actually did was they took some parking spaces away from the gravel drive is the fire access.
Yeah, they left two spaces.
They leave two spaces in the back here.
Yeah.
Which those were removed.
Yes, for the fire department.
Right. In regards to the trash, do you have that handled as well, like the question that they had about the quantity of trash, whether it's dumpsters, two separate dumpsters or are they indoors?
So let me, let me explain.
Yeah.
So the only trash, any trash that we would be generating that has marijuana product, which theoretically should be absolutely none, because everything we're receiving is prepackaged, everything we sell is prepackaged. If by chance a package opened and something's go down the floor, you know, we have to basically capture all the information with that, it's all lock controlled, report that to the state and then we will bring it back to the wholesaler, which for the most part, Nature's Remedy and the same property is going to be our wholesaler. So any marijuana product would not be disposed of by us, it would be through Nature's Remedy.
Okay.
Or if we purchase from a different wholesaler that way. Besides that, the only other trash that we'd be generating is, you know, our 10 employees with their normal lunch.
Break room.
Break room type of trash, absolutely.
Office debris?
Yes, and it's not drawn on this site plan, I'm not even sure if it's drawn on the other one, you don't see any dumpsters here anywhere, right? When I spoke to Bob Carr from Nature's Remedy, he looked at the plan, so he's like, no, it's strange that it's not there, because I know that they had a plan for what they were doing with their dumpsters. So as far as the office trash that we generate, we'll just be using one of the Nature's Remedy dumpsters, because it's not going to be significant.
They weren't just beyond these generators, like at one, or maybe they moved?
If I was a betting person, I'm pretty sure I saw them there, but definitely don't hold me to that.
All right.
You know, so, you know, right now, we're not even actually in the building yet, so we're not generating any trash, so I don't have a reason to go look for dumpsters, except for the letter that we got yesterday.
I think we've gotten a lot of our answers answered from our last meeting. The fire access and.
Yeah, and relabeling this, basically just going back in time that we're approving the plan that we originally saw. That was the biggest sticking point that anybody had, so.
Absolutely.
I'm very content with this now, and if this changes to the left side of the building, we'll address those later, right?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve this plan?
Second, all in favor?
For 310 Kenneth Welch, specific, because that was another sticking point, was 308 shows on the plan, so I just want to make clear that we're approving the plan for 310 Kenneth Welch only, even though 308 is on there, I think it's shown for.
That's right.
Parking, shared reasons, that I don't want it to be, that we're approving anything relating to 308 Kenneth Welch.
I'll amend my, my motion to 310 only.
Second.
And the label on the plan calls for 310 Kenneth Welch Drive, I believe that the, the fact that they have the refrigeration warehouse on here, 308.
Shared park.
Well, I don't know if it's shared parking or if it's shared ownership, it may be shared parking, yes, or shared ownership.
I think it's both.
Yeah, so, I'd say it's all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All set?
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thanks.
David, can you end the sign?
Yeah.
Do you need to sign these?
Are you there?
Nope, at the end.
Yeah.
Just don't bury it.
Nope. The next on the agenda is to meet with Zenith Consulting Engineers regarding site plan review.
It was to review the special permit that goes with that. Little bullet on the way.
What? Sorry, Jamie?
Nope. This is the permit?
Yes.
In its entirety?
Yes.
Has this passed, the zoning board appeals?
That is next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
We have to establish a standard site plan review fee for marijuana users.
I think it was, it's more labeling, we actually had a permit fee before and now obviously now with the special permit, so now it's just site plan review. I would say it's going to be the same as our, as our other site plan reviews, whether it be a minor or a major change.
Yeah, like site plan review or site plan review.
Not really different in my opinion, but.
They just need to change that then.
Okay.
If you guys want to comment first on that.
Oh, sorry.
And then move to that.
The only sign you'll have is the one that's on the building that shows in the, rendering in the elevation.
Above the, exactly above the door.
Do you know when you're going to open, in theory?
In theory?
Well, in, not theory, in.
Actuality.
Actuality, or close to, I'm just curious.
If I were a betting man, I'd say realistically, April-ish.
Oh, all right.
The state is extremely slow.
Okay, all right, yep.
You know that.
Just to give you an example, June 4th, we submitted our application to the cannabis commission, and at the time, it was averaging four to six months before they even looked at the application. Now it's averaging six to eight months. And then once they look at it, we're hoping that we have all our ducks in a row and can just kind of continue through that process, but even after that process, it's roughly a five months.
Is the completed site plan review a completed and okay, you know, special permit needs to be done before they review it, or can it be like?
No, no, so the way that works is you submit the application, once they deem it complete, then they will hopefully issue a provisional license. At the time of the provisional license, then there's architectural review, a few other steps in there, and then I think before they give the next approval.
Yeah.
We have to have at least like conditional approval for the special permit.
Okay.
The big thing is we need the special permit to pull building permits to stop building out the space. I say the big thing, that's one of the stumbling blocks, can't do anything inside that space without a building permit. I can't get a building permit without a special permit.
You know, when I, sorry, Brian, if I may, when I read this online, I, well, on, on the electronic version, it was, it was a little confusing, can you, can you tell me what like a vehicle trip end is, like when in your traffic study? Like is that a one-way? That's.
So a trip end is going there, another trip end is leaving.
Okay, so it's basically like take those numbers in half and it's the same?
Exactly.
Okay. Because it mentions in every category, okay. So weekday daily, that's total across the day? I mean, I'm just asking, that's what you anticipate for like the hours that you're open during the day?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and that traffic impact study, you know, is based on, I think it says in the middle, you know, previous states that have been open that have more history than, you know, than the Commonwealth.
So they want us to comment on this? Well, I, I would like to comment and I'd like to ask if the zoning board of appeals has hired a highway engineer, because a highway engineer or a traffic engineer would understand what they're saying under table one, trip generation, trip generation rates for the proposed dispensary, summarized in table two below, the ITE trip generation graph for this land use code accompanies this report as appendix B, ITE cautions the use of its marijuana dispensary data as it was derived from a small sample set. As such, trip generation estimates for this project were interpolated using average rates for the most sized establishment from the four ITE study sites. So they're using four study sites somewhere in the state of Massachusetts, maybe, or maybe over the country.
Yeah, I think, well, I think you said some places that it's meant legal for a while, is that right?
I think so, yeah, and sorry, I got into that now. Because, you know, one of the issues is there's only a handful of dispensaries that are actually open in the state.
Right.
So it's real tough to get that information.
And there's also a handful of them that have off-site parking and, and you have to be on a shuttle bus.
Correct.
To get to the facility, right, so those don't count.
True.
Without, without studying through this, what, what are the proposed hours of operation?
I believe it's 11 to nine Monday through Saturday, and I think 11 to five or 12 to five on Sunday. One of the other comments that, when I read the traffic impact study that I picked up on is, because marijuana dispensaries are relatively new, use with limited data, with limited data available and exist in limited numbers in the Commonwealth, you, when a dispensary does open, there's a surge, just like they mentioned Krispy Kreme or Sonic restaurants, so there's a surge for a couple of months and then it drops. Now, one thing that I can tell you is a dispensary just opened in Somerset, which is where I live and I drive by there frequently, I am not, the only people in line are parking attendants, and they have a huge parking lot.
What time of day?
Oh, they have attendants like a valet, like, or just people, just direct to.
Direct traffic, keep people in the lines.
What time of day?
I've been there around noon and later in the evening.
Like, like four o'clock, five o'clock, Friday afternoon?
I can't say.
When people are getting out of work, they just got paid.
Yeah, I can't say that.
I know you can't. That's why I'm asking.
No, but then if you look at.
I can't either, because that's not my job, it's job as only board of appeals.
Yeah, exactly, so when I, when I look at the commentary in here, I understand where they're going, but if you ask me to interpret every paragraph.
Right.
That's not me.
Well, that's why the, the highway engineer, who's kind of responsible for this, that wrote this, cautions the use of its marijuana dispensary data as it was derived from a small sample set. He's being very cautious because he doesn't want to get sued. Such a thing called, there's such a thing called errors and omissions insurance that engineers have to carry if they make a mistake. If a structural engineer makes a mistake, a building falls down or a bridge falls down and people die. If this is a mistake, there's a traffic jam that goes from 495 to your facility on a Friday afternoon and people like me are going to get aggravated and say, I'm not going that way anymore.
One of the things that I've said before in pretty much every meeting that we're in, if there is any concerns that the community has, we're going to go above and beyond to mitigate all those concerns.
Right, right, and when that, when that was a purview of this board, I wanted off-site parking, it's not a purview of my board anymore.
Okay.
Are there any plans for that? I mean, either initially or long-term, like remote parking?
Absolutely.
Oh, is there?
So cold storage, right, they have multiple properties in the park. We're already in the process of discussing parking for all employees, right, day one, all employees are going to be parking up the street. We're going to be shuttling them, basically one employee will take the people back and forth. And we're going to use that as overflow initially, right? So if we see that, that there are, you know, a lot of traffic, we're going to direct people there and we're going to have a shuttle going back and forth.
But in your, in your large rotary of parking right now, your 20 or 22 lot circular, were employees ever going to park there to be human?
No.
Okay.
No, there's, no.
So if your employees parked separately, your, your train of thought is I'll, I'll allow additional customer parking where our employees were going to go?
I think initially, because the only spaces that were allowed, right, as per the lease.
Yes.
Is right in front there.
Okay.
Although you see other parking, well, it's on the site plan, but on the site plan, that's for Nature's Remedy and the other cold storage businesses. So essentially, we have 20, 20 spaces in that circular parking lot. So we knew right out of the bat, we needed to do something, at least with our employees.
Okay.
You know, and again, I think the, the opening month plan is appointment only, right? And we'll see how much, you know, business we're generating. And if we need to stay appointment only, fine, if we want to kind of open it up a little bit and we experience higher, you know, traffic flows, then we'll have, you know, a shuttle going from up the street back and forth.
What's it require to make an appointment?
Going to be online.
Yep.
Yeah.
Like making a golf tee time, basically.
Pretty much, yeah. There's different apps, there are some apps that are actually specific for the cannabis industry.
How many people do you think you'll have, like spots for at one times, four, six? I'm just curious, like, what are the windows of, of appointment times, I guess, right?
Salem was bad too.
Yeah.
Was that?
It kind of goes away, even down the cave where they had shuttles.
Orange?
Yeah, I was told today that they got rid of the shuttles, because that was just the initial six months of everyone.
Right.
A surge, so to speak.
Pretty much. And again, so the, one thing that we do know for sure is the average time where somebody parks the car, gets out of the car, goes in, comes out, leaves, is 15 minutes.
Yeah.
Right, so theoretically, and I know this is just a calculation.
You know, it's very, very well may just blow over, but my concern is that three months or four months or whatever it takes until it blows over, it's going to be hell. And that's my concern.
Yep.
It doesn't, regardless of whether it happens or not. And I don't want people coming into my board, you know, turning all red-faced out there in the, in the audience, saying, what did you do that for, you know?
Yeah, and to, first of all, I don't have a definitive answer, right?
I know you don't.
I don't know exactly.
I know you don't.
The, the one thing that I will tell you is there are going to be more dispensaries open in the general area, right? So right now, the closest one I think is Wareham, right? I think there might be one in Brockton.
Yep.
And then you have Fall River.
Yep.
By the time. It seems to be one in 144, is that right?
I believe so.
It's, it has to sign up.
Yeah, they, they just got their, even though they get their final license, that's not the one that says that they can open.
Oh, okay.
So they're probably within a few weeks of opening.
Okay.
And that's.
That's going to be an interesting one to watch, because there's not a lot of room to, yeah, the name of the place is Panacea, it's Cairns Appliance, but if you're coming down 44, you have to know exactly what you're doing or else you're going to be, you know, it's small, so.
And they're going to have issues, people passing up, trying to turn around on 44.
I get it.
That would be hell.
You can't even pull it there anyhow.
I think that, that's another factor to consider, is as more of these open, there's going to be less surge traffic to each one.
Right.
Now, you know, it's like anything else, right, you, you go to one store.
There'll be some saturation at some point.
What's that?
Some saturation at some point, I would imagine.
There'll be saturation, but then it'll also be, you know, which store you're more comfortable going to Walmart or Target.
Right.
And then people kind of figure out which one they're comfortable with and you develop your customer base that way. But it's not like you're only showing town and everybody shows up, so.
So Brian, if I, to get back to the parking, he mentioned that his employees are going to park offsite, which is fine, to free up parking spaces, but what my concern is that that they're going to start to park at, you know, spot G, you know what I mean, on your, on your prior plan that we were using? I know that says cold storage, but this is an industrial parkway where a team wheel isn't coming in and out, do you know what I mean? If, if all the customers go into your circle, they're safe as can be, do you know what I mean? If they go down this back way, because this is full, then that, that's where I think you could have accidents, you know?
So, so to kind of mitigate that, where we will have two security guards always on hand, one will be in the building, one will be roving outside, right? And again, initially, we're having police detail. initially we're having police details, right, again, after the first week or so, we might not need it, we might need it two weeks after when we do, or, you know, a month after when we do it with the appointment only, but there'll be plenty of signage-
So even though the security, they're also going to be like, hey, you're going too far, it's back there, you know, if they start to head around the building because all the spots are full.
So not only will be there, not only will spot signs be directing them into that circular parking lot-
Yep.
-but there'll also be signs deterring them from going to that one.
Okay.
You know, same thing with parking along the street, you know, that's not, it's not okay.
No, it isn't, yeah, I know.
But, and not only will we have a security guard, but we'll probably have one of our employees out there too, so there's two people managing who's parking where, who's, you know, all that.
Gotcha.
So, again, we're going to do everything we can, but-
Quick question, too, is the plan to have by appointment only until you get the pushover? Is that what he's going to do?
I think the C C C is basically promoting that, right? Because of the nightmares that they, they saw when the first place was open.
Oh, Springfield, yeah.
Right, so it's like, okay-
I can go to the casino, because that's, oh, I remember the-
That was ugly.
What's that?
It was, because I was backed up in the Mass Pike.
You go to the casino?
We went to that new casino in Springfield.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
MGM.
It was backed up on miles. Yeah, so now I've heard, that's why I asked, they have a lot of that, they do it by appointment, then once it slows down, then, you know, so, I mean, if they're going to do it by appointment until the traffic gets normal, that should help a lot of the thing.
And again, I'll refer back to the one that just opened in Somerset, they opened Labor Day.
Yep.
And I think this past weekend I read that there's no restrictions as far as appointments.
Nice.
And again, so-
Hopefully that's where it goes, but I just-
Fun is a caution, but I understand.
I know.
You know?
Well, especially if you're, if you're the person that's going to get lambasted by the constituents in your town.
I'll, I'll be getting-
Yeah, I know, yeah, but, yeah, but you'll be collecting the, you'll be collecting the revenue, I don't.
Yeah.
I do this for nothing, I don't like getting beat up or nothing.
You, you were in that argument, absolutely, I see, you can, you're right there.
Yep, I know, well, thank you.
So we make a recommendation to caution the zoning board of appeals to the traffic data that's in this report and have no other recommendations?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Adrian.
Am I also?
You're also-
All set.
Good luck, and it's on the agenda for me.
You're good.
One more.
Thank you. So, you know, I, I mean, if they want to hear what I feel, they can just watch the video, you know, they don't care.
Send a little one-nine recommendation, no different than any of the others?
I think I pose a long way.
I think you make a valid point.
Mr. Zena. What, or something else, I'm sorry, Jamie.
I just wanted to bring this to your attention, that we do have that, the first yellow highlight is what you charge now for site plan, but when you took over marijuana, it was twelve forty, of which two forty was for the special permit and a thousand is for the site plan. So just something that's continuing, continuing out, do you want that same, do you want that to stay?
We typically, a thousand dollars, right, for a site plan?
For marijuana, yeah.
No, typically a thousand dollar site plan for a site plan?
Is, that's the major.
For a major, yeah, with its changes and drainage and, and this is actually a minor in this case, but it could be majors coming.
But we have had two meetings on it, even though it's minor.
True. Well, so is this something that we want to just, I mean, again, we're a short board tonight, move to put on the agenda for another meeting and just, we all put our recommendations in or have some time to digest, that, do we keep it the same as a, I mean, we're no longer doing marijuana special permits, we're basically back to site plan review, so I think we do want consistency probably with all site plan review, but-
Yeah, I don't-
-give the entire board a chance to say that, and that's my opinion.
I, I agree, can we continue that till this, the same, the same meeting?
That's a motion, that's a second, I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, motion to continue to the first meeting on October tenth. All in favor, aye, aye, aye. There, Jamie.
Kathy?
Is he really up this time?
Can he come down?
You can come down.
He's getting tired of getting up and getting down. Jamie, what the heck is this?
Well, it's a little different than what we submitted.
Okay, I, because I saw-
I brought some eleven by seventeens and I wanted to kind of discuss, discuss it if I can.
Yeah.
Also-
Motion to accept the new plan? Do we need to do that?
You mean?
Well, we've got a submission of a different plan in our packet, so do we need, in other meetings we would motion to accept that this new plan is plan of record. How about second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There, all right.
Yeah, typically when people come with a changed plan, we just address the changed plan, I mean, twenty-five years, I did that one.
Yeah, conservation, sometimes we get one, and if somebody else reviewed it prior to the meeting and then didn't feel there was an issue and the plan was changed, we have to vote it in, just to make sure that it's the plan of record.
Okay.
It was all, so it's just a-
Yeah, not really.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of changed, so, good evening, Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record, this is Five Harding Street, the former nursery, before that I think it was Hartz's Mink Farm. You remember, there was a big box store permitted here, years back. Anyways, we're proposing a, a building that's going to comprise of professional office slash bays, similar to what you have there, we, the front is going to be offices and the back will have garage bays for professionals.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at this, I'm seeing self-storage?
No, 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 it's not self-storage at all, it's, so it's going to be for any, any professional that needs an office and a place to be able to park his, you know, his vehicle.
So they're like, front to back, you have an office in the front and you have the matching unit behind it, or maybe?
It, yeah, it's front to back, it's like bays going front to back with the office in the front, you can park, you can have a receptionist or whatever the situation is.
People can get several units together sometimes.
I, I believe that that's all going to be-
They're contractor based.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a, it's like a, they call them an incubator.
Oh.
Like condos, apartments, condos?
Yeah, yep, so, the, the change from the plan that was submitted to this one is we've gone from five buildings to one large building.
Yeah.
There's several reasons for that, I'm not going to bore you with the details, but we think that this is a much better plan. What it does is it allows us, it allows us to disturb a little bit less of the site, it allows us to handle septic and drainage in, in a better way, in our opinion. So what, what we're doing right now is we're working on, on a couple of things. At the next meeting, we're going to be bringing a Form A plan.
Yeah.
And I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I don't want to, I don't want to lose you or mislead you in any direction. So, we're going to be bringing in a Form A plan, this, this pretty much right here, where we're taking what is now Five Harding Street, Thirty-Nine Cross Street, and this is part of Five Harding.
Gotcha.
And we're going to sub, subdivide it into lots one and lot two. The purpose of that division is this is going to be the commercial site plan that you see in front of you.
Mm-hmm.
And then back here, we're going to do a Form A lot with two residential house lots in the back, understanding that we will have to go to zoning board of appeals for a special permit, because the majority of our lot is business-owned, there is some residential zone right there.
Because we rezoned this at one point.
Yeah, there's, there's been, there's been some zoning back and forth, now it did come in front of you for recommendation to go to industrial, but I don't believe that was ever acted on at one of the last town.
I don't believe so, I think we were going residential because somebody wanted to put in a, a shopping pla, shopping-
Plaza or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so right now the current zoning right here is business and then residential here. So, again, we'd like to do a Form A lot with a private way subdivision with two lots in the back. Now, on the subdivision in the back, in full disclosure, what we're looking to do-
Yeah.
-is-
Form A in the front.
Yep, and then two four-acre lots-
Yeah.
-to the rear. What we've done up to this point is we've worked with natural heritage, because this is zoned endangered species habitat.
Turtle.
I believe, I believe there's a-
It is turtles, yeah.
Yeah, so we've worked with them for disturbance areas, I've brought a copy of that as well so you can see it. Long and short is, we've come to an accord where what we're proposing meets what they're looking to have us disturbed and what they want us to protect. We're still working with them on some turtle nesting areas, but I think we've got that pretty much wrapped up. So, the full, complete site is commercial here with three residential lots here. So we want to be very upfront, so you guys know exactly what you're doing when you're approving this, you're a planning board, so this is, this is what we're planning on doing.
That lot on Cross Street now, that was a separate lot, not part of this-
Yes.
-that are buying to get in there, that's business, and then the land out back is behind Sunset, is that where I wrote there, those, I think it's, no, not Sunset, Jamie, what's it called?
It's kind of-
Paradise, Paradise, I think it is up there, and these are behind that, and even though the, you know, if you come down Cross Street, there's the driveway with a gate on it, but no fence around the yard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is behind that.
That was Bill Senna's job.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, so, I didn't think it was appropriate for business to be out there, but the turtle people getting the land that I didn't want to waste it, so buying that lot in the front on top of the nursery is going to allow me to reconfigure the Form A, which is kind of a wash, even though I had to give some to the turtle people, and then on the back I get the two Form As over four acres, so, but I didn't want, originally, we weren't going to-
You give some property to national heritage, is that what you're saying?
They're, they're restricting a tremendous amount, so-
Yes.
I couldn't-
I remember when they first came in on that.
This is how they kind of divvy things up.
Yeah.
So, the blue is what they're considering credible benefit area that we can't touch.
It's really not that you're giving it, you're going to pay taxes on it for them.
Yeah, they're taking a restriction.
Oh, it's, it's just restricted use.
Yeah, so you can see the blue and the red are roughly areas that are going to be restricted.
Yeah.
The green is pretty much wetland area anyways, and they said they didn't care about it, and then the white area is here, they're going to let us-
That, that, no, that was upland turtle too, that was tortoise, right?
I think there's, I think there's a couple of different-
Box turtle.
-types of turtle, yeah, there's a few.
Really?
And one of them is aquatic, but again, I, I'm not a biologist.
Spotted.
I don't think it's the spotted, spotted's not on the list anymore, I think it's blanding, right? Yeah, blanding, maybe eastern box and one other.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen blanding before.
Yep, so, anyways, you can kind of see, we're thinking house, house, house-
Yep.
-with a lot line like we showed.
Is the area between the new commercial building and the proposed road still wooded or is that just kind of grown, low, low-growth brush?
It's, it's, it's both.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's both. It's, it's got, it's, it's got some forest and it's got, it's got a lot of overgrowth right now.
It's grown in from where it was before.
Yeah, one, one of the things that Bob has insisted on and we've implemented is berms and barriers, you know, from the commercial site, so in this area here and over in here, we're burming up, you know, just, just as a protection to the offset.
Has to keep the wildlife out.
No, no, it's more of, yeah, it's more of a-
Just for a buffer.
Oh, the sound and-
Even though we're-
Not that I'm a hero, I have a shitload of dirt at the riverside still, so, I'm just moving it over and making berms.
Sweet.
Like behind the high school, you know what I mean, an earth berm? It'll help everybody on Cross Street and our city.
Visual barrier, sound barrier?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So it's an earthing barrier and there'll probably be some vegetation along the top to complement that. And as you can see, we've got drainage going, you know, associated parking, et cetera. We're not going to be using for the commercial site, we're not using any access out to Cross.
Right.
In fact, that's going to be a house lot, it's going to be a new Form A lot, so there'll be a house there, so, the, the whole point here was to have the commercial go out to Harding, the residential, the three houses use Cross, keep residential with residential, commercial with commercial.
In previous considerations of this property, we have said that the, the access to Cross Street from here is to be extremely limited and-
With fire.
Yes, fire.
This eliminates that.
Yeah, this is going to be eliminated, and on top of it, we're going to have to provide fire suppression sprinklers in this building, so-
Oh, yeah, yeah, because of size.
Yes, yeah.
But on Cross Street, there'll just be a private driveway with two houses, no other access to the rest.
Well-served, because out on the Harding Street, you have a lot of water.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to have to-
You're going to have to do a septic system out there because there's no sewage ducts.
Yeah.
But it's only based on the office space pretty much, it's a real old, now we put a warehouse, so it's not anything crazy, is it?
Right, because your office space will incorporate the warehouse-
Exactly.
-bathroom if there's one, if you have office people in their bathroom and then warehouse people in their bathroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be your little office on the front and a half-down.
Yeah.
And then all contractor based, like, buy it, start it up, you need a place, you can't be at your house anymore, and that's all what you need to have, so.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
You may not have figured this yet, I'm sure you have, Bob, now, these are going to be sold or leased, at like, a lease, like-
What was you saying?
Like, individual sales.
We're going to call them condos, but my brother and I are going to own them all. We're only making condos so we can split them evenly and when one of us dies, it's not a nightmare, but we're going to keep it and own it and-
And lease them.
Those two lots, my kids are going to be back, they're going to rent them all.
Okay, because I think then you have better control over how much stuff goes in there and what.
Yeah, always and all that.
Yeah, if they're sold, then, then it starts to become like a, you know, I have another question too, the, the road width at twenty-four feet, whereas where you're creating is thirty, which is, which is really nice, twenty-four that's based on the culvert, you had to base that on that?
Based on a few things, up in the front, we have a number of resource areas.
Yeah.
Wetlands, floodplain, riverfront area, we're trying to minimize disturbances, because we still have to go in front of conservation and we're dealing with endangered species. The twenty-four feet width should be ample since that's wider than the majority of our streets around here, and it's going to be a true twenty-four, and then the berm, the And it's going to be a true 24 and then the berm, the berms actually start. And then the 30 feet is actually to allow more maneuvering. Cars that didn't park properly, they're sticking out a little bit, you know, things like that. So we figured if you're dealing with some box trucks, go a little bit bigger. But the entrance itself, you should only have passing traffic.
Right. And that culvert, like it's, it's, it's to like test it, it'll take anything. I mean, it's
We, we've driven over
It'll take anything that's going to go back there?
I, I
We'll test it, but I've had three twenties on trails and stuff going out there to park and do some stuff to get over back and we haven't had a problem.
Yeah, I, I've driven my
You're going to change the grade of the road coming in?
There, there is going to be some, some elevation change. There's no question about it.
Raising it?
Yes.
So once you raise the road, you're going to increase the, spread out the burden for the culvert, you should be fine?
Oh, yeah, that's probably that old more, even, yeah.
Right.
We'll take a look at it. Bob, the last thing Bob wants to do is pave the road and have a culvert sale.
Yeah.
So that, that will be looked at.
And there's no retail either. This isn't a retail mall or something. This is all just very, very minimal traffic.
Yeah.
Contractor base.
So where are we with this tonight?
This is preliminary.
Well, this, this is what we'd like to do. We'd like to come back to the next meeting and, and get approval on this with the Form A plan. And following that, we'll follow up with a Form C definitive for the, for the waivered subdivision in the back.
Yeah.
If that's amenable to the board, then that's ideally what we'd like to do.
I mean, I, you know, short of taking a vote, I'm, I'm good with the basic design here.
Right.
I like the, the residential lots in the back, separate any pass through from the Cross Street out to Harding. I do see some letters from some other boards that need comment.
I haven't seen them yet.
Well, I see a letter here from Conservation that they're requesting maybe a filing or something.
Yeah.
You know, again, different board, but I guess my thoughts are the only reason we wouldn't want to have you on the agenda for the next meeting is if these boards didn't have time to comment or review. But absolutely otherwise, I guess what I'm saying without actually saying is they probably haven't seen this plan.
They have not.
So they, any comments they've made so far on the previous plan, none on this plan. So they'd need time to re-review us as well.
Yep, we can, we can drop this plan off to them right away so they can, they can have adequate time to review. The next, the next meeting is this month, correct?
Plankwood has a meeting on the 29th, 6th?
The 26th.
And then October 10th.
Well, if I understand correctly, we need you guys to go to Conservation, right, Jamie?
No.
That's why we didn't apply at Conservation?
You go.
No, no.
Because if you didn't, then you were being a heavy shit from the park.
Yes, yes.
He told me I couldn't apply to Conservation until you guys went.
No, well, no, but that, yeah.
He wants to come in, he wants to get our thoughts to see if this is amenable to what we would possibly recommend. And then you go to Conservation because if they make any changes, then he has to come back to us with the changes for us to sign the final plan, you know what I mean? So it's, yes and no.
All right.
You know.
Thanks, Brian. You just probably saved me. All right, so you just probably saved me. All right, so September 26th, can we, can we attempt to be put on that agenda? But if something gets held up for any reason, then we'll go to the October. But I, I know with Bob pushing me, we'll probably be in for the 26th.
When do you plan on going to Conservation?
We'll be filing with them beginning of the week because they close at noon tomorrow.
Okay.
So it'll be the beginning of next week, we'll be filing with them.
Yeah.
We're finishing up a couple of calculations on the drainage, the drainage basins for this, and that's pretty much all we need to
So you'll be on the, the 24th meeting for the ConCon?
Oh, September?
I believe so.
What's the date?
No, we may send this off to Nick Laney.
29, 27.
I might be able to make the 27th with advertising.
That would be their next scheduled meeting.
But Conservation may send this off to Nick Laney.
They may, they may.
Probably will.
Yep.
If they do, I would like to ask him to check it out for, for your drainage and everything else. And that way he catches two birds with one stone.
24th is the next Conservation meeting.
Okay. I'll talk, I'll talk to Bob tomorrow.
Will you talk to Nick when it goes to him or does Conservation
If Conservation recommends it going to Nick, then yes, I will definitely reach out to Nick.
That's typically based on a bigger project for peer review.
But this is, this is a cold water stream with trout in it supposedly.
If I can say something, this, we are, from the market basket, that was what was going to be there before.
Yeah.
And it was all approved and what I would say in names, a couple of people said they've been Conservation, they've kicked this piece of land around for years and years, they know it better than any piece of land down. And we're staying in the small footprint of what they've done, way less impervious.
Right.
So we don't expect to have a problem. The line ran out, so we do have to go to them and ask for their, you know, big lesson.
Yes.
Everything we're doing is so much less than what was already approved and nothing's really changed last couple of years. So I'm not really expecting problems with them.
Right, I, I'm not expecting problems with them either, but if they send it to Nick Laney, that just doesn't kill the truth.
Couple more weeks, yeah.
I'd like to kill two birds with one stone and not, and not have it, have him take it from them and then have
Well, it's either a bunch of motions pending.
Yeah.
Sure.
May have to be
Understand.
follow ups.
Yeah.
I just want to make it as quick as possible. Because it's, it looks like a good sized drainage structure and
Yeah, they're, they're, they're large basins.
Yeah. Excellent.
All right, so
I think it's a great use of the property.
Do you like it, Peter?
Yeah, I like these in general. I mean, I, they, they basically, yeah, they do what, what Mr. Palucci said. They keep, you know, contractors out of their neighborhoods where they really don't want to be. They want to be somewhere in between this and a giant, have an up big building.
Yeah, yep.
When you come back for what would hopefully be your last meeting, can you just do either an elevation for the front of the building, the, the approach side? Just so, for site plan review, we do like to see the outside of the building. And I know this is probably a decent thing of the back of the building.
Yeah.
But just the storefront side, even if it's a close representation photo of what you think you're going to do, just something.
No problem.
And any side lights that are going to be out there too?
Yeah, we sent it out to the Lightning Design Guide. We didn't get it back yet.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Will there be signage out on 44?
There is going to be one. Right now, there's an existing sign that falls
Yeah.
Pretty much right in, right at
The nursery.
Yeah, it's going to be right near where our entrance is going to come out. What we're doing is we're going to come out perpendicular to the road. Right now it kind of comes out unasked angle. This will make it so the line of sight is much better. What we're going to do is we're going to, we're proposing our site over here so it'll meet the zoning bylaw.
Yep.
There's a water line in, hey, I mean, this town water is
Across the street. What we had to do for the Saga Fusion was directionally drill under.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, base eight piping did that for us.
You'll have to do it again here?
I imagine that we will.
A much bigger pipe, I would imagine?
I think we'll probably have to push a six or an eight underneath, but I believe the city's water line over this 30 inches. I think they told me it's huge.
City of Ton.
Yeah, it's massive and it's off the shoulder, or at least it was up the street. And we're showing it over there is where it was marked out. So it's a massive one.
Because cutting that road is probably a question to
Yeah, no, they, they paved it in the past. I want to say they paved it two or three years ago.
It's pretty good there. It's not great, but it's pretty good.
I agree, yeah, I agree.
And that cut is pretty much, I, I wouldn't go so far as to say pre-approved, but that, that cut in on the road is, yeah, it's, that's the same one everybody's been thinking of in that same location, is that right? Like no matter, not approved yet?
No, I mean, we're not moving it.
Right, that's why it's the same spot every time almost, everybody who's thought of the same spot.
It has to be shifted a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, but there's really no curb there or anything.
No, there's not really. It's just a Cape Cod berm. It's not like a nice granite curb.
No, it's
Is the sewage fill station, like would you even be able to, oh, is that far down?
This is the entrance of it right here.
Oh, okay, yep, I see it, yep.
You know where the new Saga place is? We're right near that, yep, right next door.
In some spots, it drops way, way down in there, but this is, once it started to climb back up again? Or we have to fill the map?
No, no, in the, in the front here, it's dropped down. You start coming back up a little bit and we're, we're in the back over in here. But this is where your big culvert under the road where
Oh, okay.
Cory Brook actually travels underneath.
Looks good.
Yeah, it does.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Yeah, please, thank you.
What's it going to be called? Do you have a name? Bob's business base.
Wayne Park or something?
Oh, business base, I'm just wrong. Maybe someday I'll need one, I don't know.
So this is all continued, we're good?
Yes.
Just a quick question. Zink had tracked me down about a week ago and said, tonight you guys are going to review Riverside. But it's not on the agenda, so he told me he didn't have any problem with it. You guys wanted to do an ongoing review of it.
Are we going to Riverside?
That was that PAA first meeting?
Yeah, we did.
Can, can we talk for two seconds about Lot D if you have a minute? I'm also covering Mr. Logan for Shamrock Next as well.
Lot B?
Lot D. D is not built yet. D is the one in the center.
For Bill?
Nope.
No, this is
Lot D Riverside, heart of the 40 yard.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm also doing Bill Logan's project as well.
Yeah.
If we can do that so we can let them go and then I can take care of Bill's if that's okay?
Sure, that's fine.
That's all right? So we brought in, as you know, I believe it was last year, when we were in front of you for the 40 yard.
Yeah.
We were originally planning on Lot D to have townhouses.
Yeah.
We've actually had great success with duplexes on Lots C and B. And so we'd like to propose duplexes on Lot D. What this is, is this is essentially just a conceptual of what we're looking to do. What we're seeking here tonight is the nod because we, I believe in, in our approval, any changes, we said we'd come back in front of the board. What we'd like to do is we'd like to go from the townhouses to the duplexes, understanding that we'll have to have Nick Laney review drainage and septic and everything.
How many more, I mean, what's the change in lots?
It's not the change in lots. This is, this was the same lot.
Same number.
Change in units.
Same number, same sizes, just in duplexes. But you guys approved my permit, so I could, if I stayed in the footprints, I could put whatever styles I wanted in. But because we're putting the gap in between them all, I can't stay in the footprint, so that's why we're asking.
So you're, you're coming out of the footprint of the
Yeah, originally, Bill didn't have to go as box. I didn't have gaps in between them all the
You had four unit clusters or something before?
Yeah, we're like six or seven.
Sixes, yeah, yep.
The back was always duplexes.
That's right.
In this, didn't you have a, like a, like a company garage that you were going to put at the end, is that going now?
No, we're still going to, the parking for that is here and do you want to plant it?
Yeah, well, what, originally that was that. But then I was making a big mess out of it trying to squeeze it all in there for really no reason. So because these are all going to be drive unders and I'm going to, I'm planning on keeping a couple, I'm just going to put the offices underneath because in the drive out pots. And that way that we were able, because putting the spaces in between them, I took up a lot more room.
Yeah.
So basically the park and the driveways, all that's changing, but we're not in the footprint anymore. Obviously this building, these buildings used to stop around here. And so that's why we just wanted to, you know, I know we're out of the footprint now, but I just wanted to, I think duplexes are the way to go. I mean, it's not as big of a commitment. You know, by the time I get there, the economy's going to slow down, but I just think they look nicer too. I think they'll
My, my thought is it's more attractive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would know about the economy slowing down. I don't know.
Well, that's still, that's not even maybe this year. I still got the other two roads.
Yeah, but still, I don't know what indication
After the election, I'm nervous, so. And I don't know if I'll be there before the election.
Just depends on who gets in.
Yeah, yeah.
So, obviously not binding, but I would support what he's deciding, you know, offering here.
I would never problem either.
Okay, what we'd like to do is we'd like to proceed forward with the design, with the grading and the drainage, et cetera, and send it to Nick Laney so he can work his comments out with us. And then I believe forward a finalized plan to you for a final approval?
Absolutely. I was going to make that suggestion and send it right to Nick.
That's how you have to do, not to interrupt, but that's how you have to do the parking lot with this new layout like that, like a
That's how it was before.
Okay, I'm just curious because I, it's been a while. No, the, in, in, in D.
It's, it's Yeah, massive grade change on this.
Oh, okay.
This, this elevation from here down to here is maybe 15 feet. And that's what, so where, when you come, when you come off the road here, there's already about a five foot drop. Then you come back over to here, there's another 10 foot drop. So what we did was we really had to work a lot with the grades on
So everything along here is a full walkout. To buy us eight more feet. That helps us level down, catch the grades here and then go on to those.
Yep, and the smaller buildings allow us to use the natural earth, the natural grade to our advantage on saving fill and disturbing.
Yeah, we were able to step this a lot more than the big buildings because we had to keep them up. So now instead of making that, now it's a gradual thing instead of, you know, seven, the first one had one or two steps at the front door and the last one had six steps at the front door. Now we're able to drop the buildings as we go.
Yeah.
I think it's just going to be nicer.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Appreciate that.
I seen that, no problem.
All right.
Do you have a problem?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is my problem. Don't let it against them.
Sir.
And I apologize. Thank you for taking that out of order. I know it's kind of crazy, but good evening again, Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. Here on behalf of Mr. Logan for Shamrock Estates, Shamrock Lane, we'd like to discuss bond of the road. I know I've been in front of you before for bond and it was never posted, caused quite a bit of confusion. I think on everybody's end because I thought it was posted, I think, as well as the board. Anyways, the road is essentially completed. What we'd like to do tonight is find out from the board what you guys, what the board would like for us to do as far as financial, on posting to get a final release. There's, there's one lot with no permits issued on it. It's just a blank lot. And then there's a lot that I believe there's a foundation permit that's been issued on it. And then the rest of the houses are already built on. We'd like to get everything released and, and try to, you know, I know our pave, our final pavement, the two years has been started. I turned in receipts probably about a year ago. So we want to find out exactly what the board's looking for financially and steps wise so that we can do that.
Isn't it typically for $15 a foot?
How long is the road?
I believe it's somewhere around 900 to 1,000 feet. We got a waiver from the board because of the drainage basin in the front, so it's a little longer than the 750.
So it'd be $15,000 to start with and then is there, I don't really recall a lot, a lot about this, so it's like
Well, I think the, I think all the bounds are in.
Yep, I believe they are.
And it has its second coat, right? It's all
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, I, I think the easiest way to do it
When was the second coat done? I'm just curious.
A year ago. We brought in the receipts right after.
So this is only before one year, in theory, before next, what time of year was it a year ago?
We got it in real close to the end of the season.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I remember there was some skepticism.
There was some issues with the front of the, of the road.
Yep.
And the water was coming out across the road. And what Billy did was he had the guys go back and either scarify it or cut it out. And they redid the pavement to regrade it so it went into the catch basin.
That's right.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, so it's, it's been functioning. I mean, we've gotten quite a bit of rain. It's been functioning for a year. I, I think the way that the, the board has done it in the past is we look to get a letter from the highway super to just, you know, that he's satisfied with the road. And if that's it, then we post the $15 a foot, you know, for the release and then that gets held until the road's
Right, but a highway surveyor now isn't, isn't the same guy. He's, and I don't know if he's an approval guy.
Gotcha.
But if we asked Mr. Laney to come out, if you sent us in Nick a letter stating the work that's been done, what you anticipate left to be done.
Yeah.
And ask him on behalf of the planning board to come out and and just review the subdivision, maybe even meet you out there and you can give him
Yeah, we'll give him the tour, that's no problem.
On the tour? Because you know more about the subdivision than I do.
Yeah.
Or that the guys do. And have him, or tell him what we're looking for as far as release. We want to just put a, you know, a, a small bond or a small surety up.
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
It's, and
I think that's perfectly fair.
And then have him return the, the letter to us and his recommendation. What's that?
Then we'll release the last house lot to him?
Yeah.
Because we don't have, even though you mentioned the second one, we only have the one lot, correct?
Yes, I believe that's the case.
Yep.
Um, I, yeah, we'd be looking, I guess, just to make sure, I think, it might be, I'll talk to Bill's attorney. Might make sense to have just a release of all the lots in the final in case one was overlooked. I know coming back years down the line for a release of covenants, a pain in the butt.
Yep.
All right, so I'll contact Nick at HML, and I'll ask him to come do an inspection.
He may add something in there for cleaning your own catch basins or something like that.
Yeah, prior to road acceptance, they're gonna make us clean the basin.
Right.
Clean the catch basins, make sure all pipes.
Well, I'll have to go through town meeting at the end anyway.
Yeah, and that's gonna be the recommendation, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, at that time too, so.
I think that'd be perfect.
Okay, all right, yeah.
And, um, Nick's just getting over, um, back surgery too, so.
Oh, well, this one, there's no heavy lifting on this.
That's okay, we'll get him out and get him walking around, he's supposed to be doing.
Yep. Perfect, no, I appreciate that.
Yep.
All right, so this, that's the way, that's the way we'll, and, oh, and, um, as far as posting, uh, I'm, I'm assuming that, uh, passbook savings with the clerk?
That's not typical.
Well, Kathy, if, if it's all right, can Kathy just make sure that that's the way that you guys want it? And that it's still, and then Kathy, if there's something different, you let me know. But I think passbook savings.
Been quite a while. And just make it up to the town, like, film?
Yep.
And it goes to the town clerk, right?
Yeah, it does, she, I think she takes it in.
Yeah.
All right.
And then she gives it to whoever she has to give it to.
All right, thank you very much, guys, see you in a couple weeks. Take care, everybody.
I'm gonna go from 1,300 square foot to, uh, 3,000 square foot.
How did that, uh, do you see this now? Have you been down this road ever, Brian?
Uh, what's the name of it?
Dunbar Road.
No, not if I can remember.
Okay, I bet you have.
Let me take that out. Let me see it. Focus. Tridual Shores.
Yeah.
County Road. Wait a second, yeah, I've been, eh, I have been down there.
Uh-huh, told you.
Yep. And they are at the end of the road.
Actually, the road goes right through the AR.
Yeah, that's what I don't, uh, I, I don't, um.
Uh, yeah, me either.
Unless busy.
I'm with you.
All right.
Existing Potuminus driveway. Okay, so this, this road goes to this, and they're gonna put the septic system on this road. They're 20 feet above the water. That's cool.
Yeah, that's a really, um, you see that as.
Tuesday, yeah.
What did they put, any, uh, issues?
Uh, nah, I mean, it's all improvements. We had added the, some additional silitation barrier and stuff, because they're gonna rebuild the stairs going down in that bank.
Yep.
Uh, some silitation barrier at the top as well as down below. You know, everything got approved through that board. I'm just looking at this now, kind of thinking, the road thing is not part of the purview of that board. But now tonight, I guess if we're making a recommendation, rather than just saying we have no comment, just to say to ZBA that we recommend that they make sure that the access and roadway and, and proper public access for Dunbar Road be kept viable, you know? It has the appearance that they were a part of a right of way, and it's kind of getting written off on this plan that it's no longer.
Right.
And, uh, that, that would be my only recommendation, would be that the ZBA make sure that whatever permit doesn't cut somebody off from, and, and, and/or from proper fire access if there was a, you know, an emergency. Need to go through there, that just the proper roadway.
Yes.
Easements be left through that lot that looks like it's stopping the road on the side of their septic system.
You get all that, Kathy?
Access not impeded.
Yes, there you go.
There is one more house, I mean, uh, there's, there's one more property to.
Yes, and the driveway goes through.
Splits, yeah.
Right.
I assume they, um, that as in a butter, they would have a, um, a very strong opinion for or against this, so they would, uh, they would be there, the ZBA, and, uh.
Right.
So long as it's sold to them.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I, it's, I think in these little cottage communities, a lot of times it's, we've been driving across it for years, so it's fine.
Right.
Then you get this big construction product that goes in, and these people say, "We got a sprinkler system and a lawn, you can't drive across it anymore."
Right.
And.
I'll tell you something.
It just, it, it's a fight waiting to happen unless access isn't granted or guaranteed.
It's not a fight that these people will win. Because if these people, if these people have been driving over this roadway for 20 years straight, unimpeded, and now all of a sudden they want to stop them, they can't.
I mean, may, may, I, without knowing exactly.
I want to tell you why. Because when I went to school to get my real estate license, one of the things I learned was there was a woman, I believe, that lived on one side of the Prudential Tower in Boston. And she used to go to work on the other side of the Prudential Tower in Boston. And she did it for like 30 years. And the people in the Prudential Tower, they were gonna put up this.
She got through every day, or?
Yes, she did. And they had to provide her with an access to go through the Prudential Tower.
Like a card?
Yeah, what?
Like a swipe card to get through?
No, no, uh, it's, it's rural access.
Oh, no kidding?
Public access to walk through.
Oh, yeah. So, uh, Mark, can I ask you, did, did you guys count up the, um, the impervious area like, uh, at, because, uh, very subtly, you see a lot of new, new driveway, new driveway, new driveway, existing driveway.
Yeah.
But no, like, you know, uh, driveway to be removed. It looks like a lot of pavement to me, I'm just, uh.
No, it wasn't something that got reviewed.
Okay. Because, uh, right down beneath that big giant tree, it says new driveway. Then down left of that, also a new driveway. But obviously there, it doesn't say anywhere where like, oh, this whole section of driveway is coming out, you know?
No, no, it was, no, usually lot coverage isn't something that we deal with, it's just the proximity to the wetlands. What happens is a lot of that's out of our purview in that board.
Right.
Lot coverage, here we go. Total impervious area is 25%.
How is it?
Well, because 29, 56 is almost just the house and the garage. You know, without doing all the math, because, uh, I see two new driveways. Maybe they're, maybe they're just, um, crushed stone?
Potuminus, potuminus.
As well.
Yep.
Yeah, but those, those are existing.
Yep.
And then, do you see it, it's real faint?
Yeah, new driveway.
New driveway. New driveway.
New driveway with a tree in it.
Yeah.
But you see these other big squares? These are dwellings.
Uh, what, existing?
Yeah. This one here is being taken down. This one here may have already been there and it might be already gone.
I mean, would it be acceptable if we added, um, just to have the, the ZBA just double check the, um, the, uh, lot coverage while they're reviewing it?
Yeah.
Just for clarification, uh, I'm sure, um, either the homeowners or the engineer will be there for that. And, uh, you can easily say, here's how I came up with it.
Yep.
And we're at 25%, which is very low.
Yeah, unless he's, you know, not counting the Potuminus driveway that's right of way. Like they're discounting that, because it's not theirs, it's the right of way.
Right.
So that's two comments.
And that's all I got.
Okay.
We have an issue really, I think.
Well, I'd say a motion that we send out the comments to.
Second. Oh, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
The, yeah, the other one was withdrawn.
Oh, it was? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see that. Tom Street withdrawn.
I wasn't at that meeting? Oh, I was. Oh, I was absent.
Is that technically something we should motion to make a short recess?
Yeah, probably.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the June 13th minutes for the planning board, seeing as Brian was absent anyway.
Outside of that.
You want to wait for him to vote, or?
Can he vote? Yeah, he can vote, right? How do we have to?
He probably would abstain, just because he wasn't there, I don't know.
You guys through the meeting minutes?
Mr. Chair, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the June 13th minutes.
All in favor?
You were absent from, so we're gonna call a vote.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Motion passes with a majority.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the August 8th meeting minutes.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Michael Shaughnessy.
Brian, I'd like to make a motion that we just, um, accept, um, Mr. Shaughnessy's, uh, letter, uh, into our, uh, records.
Okay.
It's, uh, just merely a follow up to the letter that we asked him for.
Yes.
Rather than, um, at the time, it was mere just word of mouth, and, uh, this is, um, this is a, a written letter from his office stating what he told us.
My second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are going to approve the South Coast Media Group. This is just for postings. Mm-hmm. We saw yours.
Are you coming in?
Yeah.
Is it just the one that?
We all signed?
Yeah, it's just the one, it's just like the, the ad is attached.
We all signed, we always have. Just sign one of them. Thank you, sir, please. Okay. Over to Kathy. This is for Crossland Development. We got a notice, meet up consultation session, and we missed it. No? But we can make right, we can write comments to them.
Oh, yeah, it's been extended, we can make comments till September 17th.
All right. So there is a habitat there. That's why we got this correct.
Is, is that, is that why, or is it because it's farmland, they're existing farmland?
It says this project is, site is located within a priority and or estimated habitat as mapped by the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. Oh, okay. Because it's agricultural. It's got unique soil.
So the, the rare species, Brian, is the Eastern Box Turtle.
Is it? You found it?
Yep. Uh, section two, page, uh, seven, page seven. Accepted by National Heritage. Is that, so they basically, did they make a deposit to the Eastern Box Turtle Bank account? Is that what I read? That's what it looks like?
Quite possible. Well, there's a turtle plan filed and accepted by the Natural, Natural Heritage. Funding for Eastern Box Turtle Bank. Yeah, maybe they did make a deposit to the bank. We're into the same term people with, um, Bob was talking about. Yeah. Does anyone wanna make any comments on that? Have you gotten this through the conservation?
Yeah, I mean, it sounded like, I, I believe the agent or chairman did attend the site visit. And, uh, they were, sounded like they were gonna let it go.
Who, the conservation commissioner's gonna let it go?
No, Natural Heritage or MESA.
Well, if they made provisions for the turtles, I mean.
A lot of times, from what I understand, is if there's a take, and the houses take up, they had in there twenty-two thousand square feet of coverage, they have to deem a certain other area undisturbed that was not in the purview of the turtle habitat. So. I don't have that information, and we didn't get it, but I just, I know from talking to another engineer about, that's how they handle it, if you feel this. You know, if you had thirty acres and four acres were considered priority, and you wanted to disturb a half acre of that, you have to give a half acre somewhere else, connected, still, still has to be contiguous to the original habitat to deem that undisturbed permanently, to make it habitat.
Yep.
They don't really have to do any alterations to it, I think, as long as Natural Heritage accepts that it could be habitat.
Yeah.
So.
I like it.
No comment.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're gonna determine our next meeting location?
Yeah, um, I guess the boards were asked if they want to move to the police station, but then.
Cutting edge, I heard.
Yeah, but then I heard that unless you're gonna have a large crowd, then it's kind of a waste of space, but then I heard that they use the other smaller conference room. So if that's where you're interested in meeting, that we'll find more information about that.
It doesn't really matter, I mean, I mean, this place is fine, but, uh, wherever, I, I know, um, the director, like him, he's kind of rooting for, like, um, police stations, so
Yeah.
he does a good job, so maybe we should move there, you know?
I just, I would say consistency. If we're gonna go there.
Oh, yeah, no, I.
If you wanna make the change, um, that's how, when I started on conservation, one night we were in some room in the old town hall, then sometimes we got the gallery room at the new library, and then other times we were
Right.
You know, might have all been at the parking lot.
Yeah.
Now it's nice, because we're here. But if we wanna move there, I'm, I'm fine with that. I support that. And if there's a smaller room, or if there's two meetings and they can work it out, that's great.
Okay.
So, yeah, I would say look into it, Kathy, if we can fit it in our schedule that the space is available for our night, because I wouldn't wanna change meeting night or time.
No.
That has, um, is the new meeting room, like, set up like the selectmen's offices with, um, remote cameras? Like, um, I don't wanna put this young gentleman out of work, and, uh, is it just gonna be done remotely, like?
That I don't know.
I, I, I think it might be.
No?
Eventually.
Oh, eventually? Oh, okay.
Do we need to vote on it?
But then you still have to man it from someplace.
You're gonna be banning it in the, in the closet.
Control.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Yeah.
It's called a control room, not a closet.
Do we need to make any act, uh, action on our next meeting, or just make the announcement that our next meeting is September twenty-sixth?
Well, probably the next one, it's already, yeah, scheduled here, and then for October, I'll find out about moving to the police station.
Okay.
So we've covered number eight and nine on the agenda right there.
Nice.
That only leaves one more.
Motion adjourned?
So moved. Or second. Was that the motion?
Yeah.
Alright, then I second.
All in favor?
Aye.